There are thousands of careers in California, but how are we supposed to know which is the right career for us? If we're to spend 40 to 50 hours a week, over 10,000 hours a year, we're going to want to choose a career that we're best at and one that we love. And with the average American changing their jobs up to seven times during their lifetime, finding the right career as soon as possible contributes to better health and help you live a richer and fuller life. The right career is out there waiting for you, and I'm going to help you find it. I'm Freddie Cochran. Welcome to California Careers. Welcome to another edition of California Careers. I'm Freddie Cochran, your host. Today, we're outside City Hall in the city of Hermosa Beach, California. We're going to go inside and meet city council member and former mayor Howard Fishman, and we're going to see how we can acquire the career of city councilperson. Let's go see how it's done. We're in Hermosa Beach, California, meeting with city council member Howard Fishman. How are you, Howard?
I'm fine, Freddie. Thanks for having me on.
Thank you for joining us. Thank you for taking the time out of your schedule. We're here today to try to teach high school students and college students how to acquire the career of city councilman or city councilmember. What is a councilmember?
Well, a city councilmember is someone who is appointed by the electorate of a particular city, and a councilperson is employed to create policy, set ordinances, vote on issues that impact people's quality of life in a community. And we also do appointing of commissions. We have four or five commissions in the city, and we interview commissioners, people who want to volunteer to serve, let's say via public works interest or parks and recreation interest or planning. So we have various commissions. The council does the interviewing and the appointments for commissions. But primarily, our job is really to set policy and procedure and to hopefully improve the quality of life of both the residents who live here as well as the businesses that operate here.
Now, Hermosa Beach has sort of a special type of a system. You were the previous mayor, isn't that right?
Yes, I was.
Wow. So you guys sort of, is it a rotating type of seat?
Exactly, yeah.
Or how does that work?
The way it works is if you're fortunate enough to get elected, in Hermosa Beach, the election cycle is every four years. So I'll use me as the example. I was elected in 2009, so I have a four-year cycle. So in 2013, my seat is up, and then I have to make a decision, do you want to run again or not run again? What happens as far as the mayor goes is every 10 months, we have a rotation, and it's based on the number of how you placed in the vote. So whoever has the most votes when they get elected would cycle into the mayor's role first, and then subsequently, everybody else gets a spin. So by the time your four years are up, you will have served one 10-month cycle as being the city's mayor.
Wow, that is very cool.
Yeah.
Okay. This is obviously a career for a man or a woman, right? I mean, there are councilmembers that are females.
Yes.
Okay.
It's an equal opportunity employer.
Okay, that's important. And so there are seven councilmembers on the...
In Hermosa Beach, we have five.
Oh, five, okay.
Yeah. City of Torrance has seven. Manhattan Beach has five. Usually, it's an odd number.
Okay.
Because you want it odd in order to, not that we're odd, but the idea is to have tiebreakers. So each city has by their charter how many elected officials for city council they would have. So in Hermosa Beach, we have five.
Okay. Can you talk us a little bit about your education? What schools did you go to? What kind of student were you to get you in the seat you are today?
Well, I was a pretty good student, and for me, my education was all back east. And I had a chance to move to California before I went into college, and I realized when I first came out here and visited that I could never be a serious student out here with coeds and weather. So I decided to stick it out in the East Coast and get my education because I knew I'd be stuck in a library when it's snowing and raining and sleeting. So my bachelor's degree I received from Brooklyn College. It was in political science. And so even back then, I knew that I had an interest in studying government. And so that was my major. I have a bachelor's in political science. And then, interestingly enough, I wanted to get into probation and parole. I wanted to always have a career in government. So what I had done was I pursued a master's degree in New York with a college by the name of John J. College of Criminal Justice. So I have a bachelor's in political science and master of arts in criminal justice. And when I moved here, I applied for a LA County position. So I knew I would be working in government. And as it turned out, from my education, it allowed me ultimately to move into a city position because after I left the county, in probation, I wound up working for the city of Manhattan Beach. And that was a career that spanned 27 years. But it was my education, my higher education, that helped separate me a little bit from other applicants. Because the position I was applying for in Manhattan Beach when I switched from the county was for what was then called a community services supervisor position. So it was a management position in government, and it had to do with enforcement of codes. It was parking animals and transportation. So the college and an advanced degree can make a difference for those people interested in wanting to work in government. I took a career path totally into government versus others who don't necessarily work in government. Like some of my colleagues, one is a municipal attorney, one is a consultant, one is a teacher, and then the other actually works for a city as well. So you can get a mixture of different careers, but I found for me, I had a lower learning curve because of the fact of having all this experience in cities. When I was elected, I actually understood more about the process and the job. So that gave me a little bit of an edge. And when you campaign, if you want to do this, you have to, and we'll talk about that in a little while, how do you get there? It's obviously important to talk about your skill sets. And I always found, for those of you out there who want to work in government, it's a one-two punch. And the first punch is the education, and the second punch is the experience, if you can get it.
Okay. So you have a bachelor's degree and a professional degree or an advanced degree.
Right.
Did your grades ever come into play? Are they ever part of the electoral process, or does anyone ever look at the transcripts or...?
No, nobody, to my knowledge, they don't. But you have to understand that if you're fortunate enough to get elected, or even if you're running for office and you file your papers to run, you are now under that microscope from the public. And there was an incident that occurred in the city of Manhattan Beach several years ago where there was a council candidate who put down some false information regarding college degrees. And not even the degrees to the extent, but the colleges that this person went to. So my point is, is always be truthful in whatever it is that you're filling out and completing. And especially if you want to run for an elected position, you better make sure that you are not embellishing or doing anything that could turn out to be an embarrassment to you because this is a position to trust. And if you do things that turn out later on to be of character that is such that you can't be trusted or nobody can believe the things that you're saying or doing, then you're setting yourself up for failure.
There goes your career in politics.
Yeah, but nobody, no, nobody looks at your transcripts per se. They don't look to see whether you're a B student or an A student.
Okay.
I think the degrees are important, but verifiable information, I would say, is probably more important than your grades. And just to get that degree is definitely going to be an asset for you as you move up into a city council type of career. I think it would be helpful.
You mentioned that you did have a bachelor's degree and an advanced degree. However, they're not required?
No, they're not.
I mean, they're highly recommended, obviously, but they're not required? Nor are there any licensing requirements to be a city councilperson?
No licensing requirements either. You know, the way it works is, for me, and I could just speak why I wanted to do this, it was really two things. One is having passion to want to serve. And two is to want to be an impact player and improve upon people's quality of life. That, to me, was, you know, why I wanted to do it. And, you know, and it comes out, trust me, when you're out campaigning, which is a whole nother process, people, you have to be credible, and people have to believe what it is that you really want to do. And I think if that comes across, and you look like you're sincere and trustworthy, and you can speak to subjects intelligently, and you have good communication skills, I think those are always the thing that will top off some success. The thing I learned in life is, in order to be successful in anything you do, career or personal, 95% of it is the ability to communicate with people. 5% is technical.
Okay.
So if you have that skill set of being able to talk to people, and people can understand you, and you understand them, and you do this active listening, and you always, you know, you don't cut people off. You just let them speak, and you're polite, but firm. I think people will see those kinds of things, and I think that is always a plus for people to try to take with them as they move through.
Social skills.
Yeah. Communications.
That's interesting. I like that one. You'd mentioned the electoral process. Let's touch on that. What is the electoral process? How does one get on the ballot and go through the...
That's a great question. Yeah. The way it would work is during an election year, during our cycle, and I'll use me again as the example. How it works for me is, I was elected in 2009, so my seat expires in 2013. So we have elections here in November. So November 2013 will be the time for me to decide in or out. Do you want to come back or not? Do you want to apply for being a councilperson again? So how it would work for me is come August of next summer, the city clerk will open up a recruitment for city council candidates. So in my case, if I want to come back, then what I do is I go to the clerk's office, and it's a process called pulling papers. So you pull a, pulling, you pull the papers in order to qualify to run as a candidate for the office of city council. So what I would do is I go to the clerk's office, I pull the papers, and then within that two-week period of time, I have to secure about 30 signatures on a nomination petition. So I have to go and get 30 people who are registered voters to sign my petition. And then you pay a fee. And then, once you pay the fee and you file back the papers with the petitions, now you're a viable candidate.
How much is that fee?
Well, the fee to do a filing and a candidate statement could cost up to $200. But you also could get some of that money back depending on the number of applicants and how much the fees are from the clerk's office could vary depending on the number of applicants. And they have, they also get fee schedules that could change. So sometimes you wind up getting some money back.
Okay.
So it's not expensive. It's a couple hundred dollars. But that's how the process works. You got to file it. And then the filing period closes. So whoever turned in those papers with the filing fee and the petitions, you are now a candidate.
Oh, beautiful. Is there a limit as to how many candidates can be on a ballot?
No.
There isn't?
There's no limit.
Okay. But there is a limit as to how many terms you can run, is that right? If you win, you can get, is it two terms?
The way it works in Hermosa Beach is there is no term limits. So in this city in particular, you can continue to run as long as you are wanting to do it further, and the electorate elects you back. So we've had, in Hermosa Beach, some candidates, actually people who have served four or five terms.
Wow.
Which is like 20 years, 16 to 20 years. So if you're good enough, and the people trust you, and you want to continue to do it, then you can serve for perpetuity purposes
Interesting.
in this city. But like Manhattan Beach, next door, and Hermosa Beach, next door, two four-year terms and you're out.
Okay. Torrance, next door, right?
Torrance has term limits as well.
Right, okay.
So Hermosa Beach is one of the few cities in LA County that does not have term limits.
Wow, that's interesting.
And it was actually taken to the public, maybe 10 years ago, where it was a ballot issue as to whether or not to impose term limits.
Okay.
And 70% of the electorate in Hermosa Beach voted against setting term limits up.
Let's touch on the, sort of the hierarchy of the political career. Generally, people start their career as a city councilperson or a city councilmember, isn't that right? And maybe move up towards the senate or assembly person, to congress, maybe even to the United States president. Is that sort of a typical...
Yes. If you want to seek higher elected office, you have an edge as a candidate if you are serving on the local level first as a councilperson because it shows a couple of things. When the positions that you're mentioning, state senate and assembly and congress, those are all elected positions. So in order to be successfully elected, you have to know how to do it.
Right.
Because if you can't do it at the bottom level, which is the municipal level, if you want to progress up into state and federal, then you're going to have a more difficult time to get those positions, you know, not knowing how to get elected.
That's what I wanted to touch on next. Can you walk us through a typical day as a councilperson? What types of issues are you guys working on right now?
Well, we're getting closer now to our mid-year budget review. The most important things that city councilmen have to deal with is the budget process because it's the budget that makes things happen. You use your budget to pay your employees. You pay your budgets to, you use your budget to not just pay employees, but to take care of capital improvement projects. So how do you fix streets and sewers? You have to budget monies for those things.
Okay.
How does, how do cities pay their bills? I mean, it's all through the budget process.
Let's talk about those bills. What types of bills are you guys paying?
Well, we pay like everybody else. We pay for electricity. We pay bills to vendors for products. We pay for technical support for, let's say, IT services.
But not just under the city hall's roof, but are you paying the actual, the street lighting bills?
Well, street lighting gets subsidized by residents. But this, we do budget monies for that. We budget monies for animal control. We budget monies for parking meters to buy them. We, you know, we have to buy things as well. We have to purchase vehicles for our police department.
Okay.
We have to buy fire trucks. I mean, nobody hands it to us. You know, a fire truck could cost $400,000.
Wow.
So the money just doesn't come out of the sky. We have to, you know, look at our revenues going in and out, and then we can balance our budget that way. So that's something that, right now, we're going to start to look at is, we work on what's called a fiscal year budget, which means it starts July 1 through June 30 versus calendar years. So we're getting into January. So right now, with January, we're going to do a mid-year review and see how our funding is looking. And we go from there. Other things we're looking at now, our sewers are a mess. We're trying to pave more streets. We have to figure out ways to take care of that, the infrastructure. We have an issue coming up with an oil company that we may have to pay an oil company $17.5 million as part of a settlement
Wow.
on a lawsuit that the city was in for the last 15 years that we just settled.
Oh, boy.
So this will become a ballot measure in 2014 for the people to decide whether they want to allow oil drilling in this city.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
So if the ballot measure passes, then the city will not have to pay $17.5 million to the oil company. They'll reduce that debt to $3.5 million. And then we could pay that $3.5 million back through oil royalties. But if the ballot measure fails, and the people in this community do not want drilling, then we have to figure out how to pay off the $17.5 million. So, you know, these are issues that we deal with all the time, is how do you pay off your debt? And we also have what's called unfunded pension liabilities. You know, pensions have become cost prohibitive with city employees. So we're also working on ways in which to try to get the employees to pick up more of the share of their pension. So this happens through a process called labor negotiations. So as city councilpeople, we give direction to the city manager to work with the unions in the city to negotiate, you know, some kinds of give and take with concessions and raises and things like that to try to reduce our pension obligations. So we have a handful of stuff between infrastructure and labor relations, the potential for the oil, how to pay off debt, getting our budget balanced. Those are just five things.
You guys also draft local laws, isn't that true?
Well, yeah, we, and we, sometimes the laws that we draft are, people are ambivalent about them. Most recently, the things that I can speak of when I was doing the mayor stint, we got a smoking ban placed on our strand, our pier plaza, city parking lots, city parks, and outdoor dining areas.
Oh, wow.
Very controversial.
I'm all for that.
Well, so am I. But there's also such a thing as, well, you know, are you now encroaching on people's personal rights? And you have a bunch of people who like to smoke, and they don't like people telling you where you can and can't smoke. So, but to me, it was always about, again, equality of life, health and safety. So we narrowly...
So that law actually passed?
Yeah.
So no smoking on the strand in Hermosa?
Yes, yes.
Wow.
Yeah.
It's a biggie.
It's posted. We have signs up there. It's passively enforced, but we're looking to do a little bit more than passive enforcement. It's gone on probably eight months now, eight to nine months.
Wow, okay. That's interesting.
We just banned styrofoam, polystyrene products in the city.
Really? Why?
Well, people take, like the coffee cups, the styrofoam, the crunch, and that's not recyclable when it's dirty. And people take it onto the sand. You know, they go to the fast food places, and they walk out with the styrofoam stuff. And this winds up in the ocean.
Uh-oh.
And the marine life takes a hit from the styrofoam. And then the fish can eat it, and then you eat the fish.
Uh-oh.
And there's carcinogens here from styrofoam. So we also narrowly
Wow.
passed a law that bans polystyrene products, which is really the styrofoam. And so we, we've done some things here that are not always popular because some businesses opposed it. And because now, if you're banning that product, and let's say you're a restaurant, and you can't use it as takeout, well, now you have to find an alternative. So the alternative, to some degree, could be more expensive or not as good as a styrofoam product. So, but strangely enough, when we brought it out to the businesses, there was really not a lot of controversy from their standpoint. The controversy came from the plastics industry.
What do you think about the...
I mean, they came down here, like, you can't do that. And our comment is, well, yes, we can if we get the votes for it.
Wow.
And we were able to get a three to two vote to make that happen.
What did you think about the next door is Manhattan Beach? What did you think about their ban on plastic bags?
We haven't gone there yet. But anything where you can, what we call reduce the carbon footprint, is important. And being a beach city, our coastline, our ocean and beach is probably our most precious commodity. And it's incumbent upon us to keep it clean. And plastic bags also, and they don't recycle, and they become pollutants. And so I appreciate what they've done over there as well as they appreciate what we're trying to do over here. So I think sometimes beach cities team up together in many instances to try to best protect the beach and the ocean from litter and from, you know, carcinogen products. And, you know, we want to breathe the air safely and cleanly. And the more things we can do to make that happen, I think, again, is improving that quality of life. That is what's driving me to do what I do.
Good deal. Let's switch gears for a second. Can we talk about compensation? If I'm to, or anyone to come on as a city councilperson, what kind of money can they expect to make? Or what types of benefits can they expect to...
Yeah, that's, that's another good question. People don't do this for the money. So if you're expecting to get paid royally, it's not going to happen on a city council level, at least in this city. I mean, the city of Los Angeles, if you're elected there, there may be a higher pay scale. But for a city of this size, the total compensation package that you would walk out with here if you get elected would be approximately $35,000 a year. And that would include, I think you get like $500 a month stipend. There's a car allowance, which is a couple hundred dollars a month. But the real cost issues that drive up to $35,000 is you get full health insurance.
Okay.
And you also get a pension.
Oh, really?
Strangely enough, yeah, that the city would be paying for.
Even if you're only here for four years, you would...
Yeah, well, it takes five years to be vested in the retirement system. So if you don't come back, let's say you do one term of four years, and you decide not to come back again, then you can cash out the four years. It's not a lot of money, but the money that the city put away, you can go and end your membership in the pension plan and cash it out.
That's pretty cool.
So if you run a second term, so now you're eight years in, so five years with the pension, you're vested now. So you would have eight years of service credit for a pension. So that's pretty much, and I think they give you life insurance as well. So there's a couple of health benefits and pension benefits in life insurance. Again, vehicle reimbursement and also a stipend, and a smaller stipend just for doing the job.
You know, all this leads into my next question. What is your favorite thing about this, this career? What is your favorite thing about what you're doing?
It's actually getting, getting laws passed that, to me, will improve everyone's lifestyles here. We pride ourselves on tourism. We, we have a nice little community here. And I want to see this community become better from, again, the quality of life. I want to see our schools continue to thrive. I want to see our streets get fixed. You know, I want to see smoking totally eliminated here.
Me too.
I mean, we, we also have done such things as giving away community gardens. In one of our parks, we voted to allow residents to take a little piece of parkland that we own and grow fruits and vegetables
Wow.
on it.
Cool.
And what they do with these fruits and vegetables is they donate it to a food bank.
Wow.
And we just recently got involved with a seven-city bike master plan. And what we're trying to do is get people out of their cars and onto bicycles, which reduces pollution, obesity. We're part of what's called Vitality City. We're one of those healthy cities. So we need to do some things to promote healthy living types of things to get involved with. So we are putting what's called charos in, which are shared bike lanes with cars and bikes together. We're looking at a, right now, an aviation boulevard corridor for bicycles. So those are the things that turn me on, is to get those things voted on and adopted. Because not everybody agrees with some of the concepts that we talk about, like the smoking. I mean, some people don't want smoking bans on this dance. And it's not like they're, they're against it. They just don't feel government should be intrusive to do things like that. We should not be regulating things like that. But at the end of the day, if the votes go the right way, then I walk out of these meetings feeling very satisfied that some of the things that you really feel are important, not just for you, but for the most part for the community, then that, to me, gets, gives me that high, gives me that adrenaline rush.
What's your least favorite thing about this career? You can't please everybody all the time.
Well, no, and I think that's, I think, Freddie, you just answered my question. I think the fact that you never can really reach, you can never really satisfy everybody. And sometimes I get some nasty emails or phone calls where people will come to the meetings and start pointing fingers in your face and blaming you for the woes of the world. And you need a thick skin. And, you know, sometimes, you know, after every council meeting, I go home. I can't go to bed at least until four or five hours later because I am so worked up. And, and when I get home from a meeting, I'll go on my email, and I'll see some emails from somebody beating me up over a vote because they didn't agree with it. And, and I respond to those emails, you know, and I'll, I'll tell them, look, you know, I'm sorry we don't agree. We have the right to disagree. But, you know, I was elected to make informed, educated decisions, and my votes are always based on that, not based on emotion. So, but some people get emotional. And when they get emotional, sometimes you just can't help it. But, you know, you take it personally sometimes. I need to do a better job of getting my skin a little thicker.
Thank you so much for meeting with us today.
Yeah, it's my pleasure.
We'll wrap it up. I wanted to know, do you have any advice for young people or any closing remarks that you'd like to...
Yeah, I mean, don't, don't always think about careers from a dollar and cents perspective. Look at it from the standpoint of wanting to serve your community. And there's no better career, I think, than working in government and trying to be a difference maker. And don't be afraid to ever run for any kind of office, whether it be president of an organization or a secretary in a nonprofit. Just get involved. organization or a secretary in a nonprofit, just get involved and good things will happen if you stay active and you just never give up and pursue higher education and pursue work experience. And like I said earlier in this interview, that one-two punch, I think, will always be best for you in the end, and be, be a difference maker.
Howard, thank you again so much for taking the time out to meet with us today.
My pleasure.
There you have it, how to be a city council person. We're here in the city of Hermosa Beach. It's another edition of California Careers. I'm your host, Freddie Cochran. Thanks for joining us, take care.